This is Tuesday, April 18th, 2017. It is 9:00 a.m. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nobiel?
Here.
Councilmember Cuff?
Here.
Councilmember Clufus?
Here.
Councilmember Shipley?
Yes.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. Now move to agenda item number one, which is the approval of the minutes for the April 4th, 2017 City Council business and the April 11th, 2017 City Council workshop. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We will now move to the proclamations, portion of the agenda, agenda item number two. Councilmember Cuff is going to be reading the proclamation recognizing the month of April as National Volunteer Month. Anyone who's here to receive, please come forward.
Whereas April is National Volunteer Month, it was established as the official time to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service experiences through hundreds of community service organizations, including Flagler Volunteer Services. And whereas volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our cities, counties, and our nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas volunteering enhances the lives of volunteers, increases self-esteem and physical well-being, provides opportunities to learn new skills and abilities, and offers the chance to meet new friends and associates. And whereas nonprofits, charities, community and faith-based groups, schools, national service programs, and volunteer centers such as Flagler Volunteer Services have joined with state and local governments to celebrate and praise volunteers who have given tirelessly and selflessly to the service of others. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida do hereby recognize the month of April as Volunteer Month in the city of Palm Coast and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteer services in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Signed, this 18th day of April, 2017, Melissa Holland, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Good morning, councilmembers.
Morning.
We are so honored to come before you. My name is Judy Stetson Weaver, and I'm the board president of Flagler Volunteer Services. I have Susie Gamblin over here, who's the executive director. I have Maureen Caulfield, who is one of our recipients today, which I'll be announcing them each in just a few minutes. And then we also have another staff member here assisting us, Josephine. You were each gifted with one of these, which is a culmination of what we were able to accomplish this last year. And I just want to read off the different hours. Public safety hours, 45,672. Disaster volunteer services, 42,950. Education, 39,540. Social services, 25,833. Health, 17,610. Arts and community activities, 16,169. Capacity building, 4,603. Capacity and building is how we're going out and recruiting new volunteers to support all the nonprofit government and healthcare agencies. For the year of 2016, we had 3,341 volunteers who reported 192,377 hours in our community. According to the CNCS value, that brings a total of over $4.4 million savings to Flagler County. Please.[326.22][326.22](applause) We would like to specifically recognize some of the volunteers here in the city of Palm Coast. So bear with me as we invite each volunteer up. Please stay up here for the photo opportunity at the end. The first award is an outstanding service Hurricane Matthew Cleanup for Ms. Josephine.[349.31][349.31](laughter) She was our tree lady![352.41][352.41](applause) Thank you so much. She did an outstanding job. Certainly, we all had a very busy hurricane season, and the volunteer agency and the volunteers were just spectacular with coming together. So now I'm going to go ahead and call up the other ones. The first one, Sonya Byrne, please come forward.[376.78][376.78](applause) Thank you so much. We're gonna wiggle through. I'm gonna keep right on saying names. The next one is Maureen Caulfield. She has over 10,000 hours lifetime, 12,765.[398.97][398.97](applause) Kit Leslie?
I don't see it.
Okay. Stella Linder? A lot of our volunteers are volunteering, I just want you to know.[432.03][432.03](laughter) Michael Muller?
He's doing traffic accidents.
Traffic accidents, okay.[454.53][454.53](laughter) Jack Olden? Is Jack here? No, okay. Margaret Pangburn? She also has a lifetime and achievement of 10,949 hours. Felix Ramos?
Ramos.
Barbara Schaaf? My goodness, they're busy working today! Richard Stevens? All right, well, those are the different volunteers that we have. And one of the things I did want to go ahead and mention, on the front of this, it shows an iceberg. And it is a proven fact that more volunteers do not turn in their hours than those that do. I have to admit, I'm a number-one person. I've never turned in an hour![507.31][507.31](laughter) But, so, this is what we have recognized. And so, I really want to thank each of you for this time and for your continued support for Flagler Volunteer Services. We greatly appreciate this proclamation, the opportunity to come before you.
We should mention that the amount of hours is extraordinary, but the amount of cost savings of services we would have to provide based upon the taxpayers of our community providing those services, this offsets this tremendously. So, it really is a tremendous value. We love our volunteers and our community. They provide a great service, but the cost itself oftentimes goes overlooked. COPs, those kind of services, we would have to provide somehow at a cost to the taxpayer. So, thank you for all you do at Flagler Volunteer Services. I've been great admirers of yours for many years, so thank you.
And she's gonna come and help us at our fundraiser on Saturday night.[571.29][571.29](laughter) Everybody watch the pod to admire the magic, please do. And we'll go ahead up here and take a picture. Yeah. Okay.[580.16][580.16](laughter) Okay. Mr. Nobiel, behave. All right, we're gonna take a few. Keep smiling. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Congratulations.[623.32][623.32](applause) I would like to mention one last thing. We would appreciate your continued support. CNCS has been named by the president as a program which would be dissolved, so we need everybody's support. That's a third of our funds. Thank you very much. Bye-bye. We'll now move to agenda item number three, which is a proclamation recognizing the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Councilmember Clufus is going to be presenting this.
Whereas Florida's future depends on nurturing the healthy development of over 4 million children in our state, and whereas the abuse and neglect of children can cause severe, costly, and lifelong problems, and whereas every child has the right to be safe, healthy, and educationally and developmentally on track, and whereas research shows that parents and caregivers who have support systems and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. And whereas individuals, businesses, schools, and faith-based and community organizations must make children a top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. And whereas during the month of April, in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection and the Department of Children and Families, the city of Palm Coast will support the statewide campaign promoting awareness of healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and the type of concrete support families need within their communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida do hereby declare April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all who read or hear this proclamation to engage in activities whose purpose is to strengthen families and communities to provide the optimal environment for healthy child development. Signed, Mayor Melissa Holland, City of Palm Coast.[774.01][774.01](applause)
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone. My name is Mia Eckberg. I am one of the two supervisors for the Department of Children and Families, Family Safety here in Flagler County. I want to, on behalf of our office here, Child Abuse Investigations, Flagler County Family Safety Office, and the Department of Children and Families, I want to extend my gratitude for inviting us here and for this proclamation. I wanted to share just a few things with you today. Here in Flagler County, in the last fiscal year, our 10 investigators that we have here worked 962 child abuse, neglect, and abandonment investigations or reports thereof. Of course, not all of them result in any type of action. However, during that same time last fiscal year, we had a total of 59 children come into care, in shelter care, here in Flagler County. Over the years, I have been with the Department of Children and Families for about 15 years, and I came to Flagler County in, I believe, 2010. Prior to me coming here, we had about two or three investigators that did the investigations of child abuse, neglect, and abandonment in Flagler County. We have now had to increase that to 10 investigators just this year. We now have two units here that work to help families. This, of course, is very important because, as you know, this doesn't only impact our community, it impacts families, and of course, it impacts the child that we work with. So again, I want to say, I need to thank you to all of you for inviting me here and for this today. Thank you.[911.93][911.93](applause)
You wanna come on up?
Yes, that's fine.
You wanna bring the proclamation up for me?
Absolutely.
Okay. Wanna come around? (pause) Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. One more. the proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual assault violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community, and statistics show that 1 in 5 women and 1 in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives, that 1 in 6 boys and 1 in 4 girls will experience a sexual assault before age 18. Youth ages 12 to 17 are 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault, and on campus, 1 in 5 women and 1 in 16 men are sexually assaulted. And whereas the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign, a program of End Violence Against Women International, is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals so they can help sexual assault victims access supportive resources, engage the criminal justice system. And whereas government leaders must work together with advocates and communities across the county, across the country, because we are strongest when we raise our voices together to change the culture to prevent sexual violence. Prevention requires addressing the root causes and social norms that allow sexual violence to exist. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida do hereby declare April 2017 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to support the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign and participate in creating a safer community for all of us. Signed, this 18th day of April, 2017, City of Palm Coast, Melissa Holland, Mayor.[1100.13][1100.13](applause) Good morning. Thank you, everyone. We truly appreciate it at Family Life Center. Family Life Center has been around since 1987, so next month, on the 27th, we officially turn 30. We have been providing free services. As of November 18th of 2015, we have accompanied over 60 survivors with the same accompaniment, which is a sexual assault nurse's examination, or as the community would know it, the rape kit. It is very important for us to recognize this because everyone deserves to be safe. Everyone deserves to have the opportunity not to be violated in their community. We are thankful for everyone. Ms. Heidi Shipley is a board member of ours, and we are greatly appreciative of her, our other 14 board members, and the 20 wonderful staff that we have. We thank you. We are very grateful for the city of Palm Coast and the support that you give us. Start By Believing is an initiative that you start from a place of belief. If one of us were to get into a car accident, we wouldn't say, "Oh, my goodness, how fast were you driving? Were your lights on? Was it dark?" No. You would say, "Oh, my goodness, are you okay? Is there anything I can do?" And that's the same response we need to have for a survivor of sexual assault. When someone comes to you, if they have the courage to say that they were sexually assaulted, I'm imploring you to please start from a place of belief, to start by believing. So we encourage everyone to take the pledge to start by believing, and thank you so much for supporting Family Life Center for these past 30 years. Thank you.[1204.01][1204.01](applause)
We'll now move to agenda item number five, which is a presentation of Flagler County's Centennial Pins to the mayor and city council.
I'd like to, we're here this morning to thank the city of Palm Coast and for their cooperation, coordination, and present to you some centennial pins to those of you up there. We have a couple items coming up. This Saturday, we have a kayak paddle from your park with a presentation by the city on the history of Long's Landing, and we're gonna kayak to Bing's Landing, and where Al Hadid is going to give a presentation on the history. And then that afternoon, from 2:00 to 5:00, at the Cheer at the Pier, fundraiser for the Flagler Beach Museum, we will have seven historical reenactors, including Henry Flagler, John Rockefeller, Mr. and Mrs. John Astor, the unsinkable Molly Brown, and again, Al Hadid as Francisco Pelisser. They'll be walking around the crowd and talking to people. We have, of course, your representative, Art Dyke, is on the committee. Holly Alvanese is the staff coordinator, and the real historians right here, Cisco Dean. I'm just P.T. Barnum. This guy's done all the research, so he's quite the thing. And then we also would like to invite you to the April 29th celebration at the Government Services Building to join us and celebrate 100 years of Flagler County.
Thank you, Paul.[1366.13][1366.13](applause) For all your work, also. I know it's been a long process. A lot of time and energy has gone into this to see it to fruition, so we thank you for honoring 100 years of Flagler County.
I forgot. I also wanted to thank the city for their cooperation. City staff, Cindy, has worked with me, getting information out on the website, so it's been a real pleasure to work with the city and done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll now hear from our health department director, Dr. Bob Snyder, who's going to give a presentation on the state of the health in the county by Flagler County Health Department. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm Mayor Holland. Sorry, that was kinda loud, sorry. I'm Bob Snyder. I'm the administrator of the Department of Health, and I can't think of anything more important than the health and wellness of our community. So, thank you for this opportunity. Okay. In 2016, the calendar year 2016, our staff of 40 at the Department of Health, that includes doctors, dentists, dental hygienists, nurses, and just a wonderful backup team for those providers, we touched the lives of 14,699 individuals, providing 177,000, 198 services, different services, to those of us that live in Flagler County. The reason why it's significant for Palm Coast is because 77% of the patients and clients that we treated come from the city of Palm Coast. This is just an example of some of the services that we provide. I'm not gonna go through every single one of them, but, you know, family planning, HIV, testing and treating for STD services, sexually transmitted disease, AIDS, school health, epidemiology, communicable disease, surveillance and investigation, a big federal program called WIC, Women's Infant and Children, very important nutritional program for young families, dental, for all Medicaid children in Flagler County, we are your dental provider. 5,000 children that we take care of annually. Of course, vital stats, and some other things that we'll get to in a few minutes. Just some volume indicators, 8,000 immunizations, 5,000 STD services, dental, I said 5,000, we had close to 6,000 visits, 758 communicable disease investigations. And there's one I really want to point out, that's prenatal. As you know, we do not have a birthing hospital here in Flagler County. Our two birthing hospitals are in Daytona, one's in Norman and the other one's in Daytona. So moms who have no insurance and are pregnant, pregnant moms on Medicaid, we are the safety net for the community. If we did not have prenatal services with a credentialed ARNP and nurse midwife, I'm afraid that infant mortality would probably increase in Flagler County. So this is a program that is really, really important to us. Environmental health, 20 different programs just within our environmental health service. Two examples, you want to put in a new well, you need to work with our health department to make sure it's signed off on. You want to put in a subseptic tank, that would be another example. Or open up a tattoo parlor, another example. You deal with the health department. We provided about 2,500 total services last year, permitted 630 facilities. So for a group of three people that comprise EH, they're extremely busy. Okay, second part of the presentation. Every single year, the University of Wisconsin and the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation partner up to analyze data for every single county in the nation. They look at how many indicators of health outcomes to determine how healthy are we, especially compared to the other counties in the state of Florida. Well, two years ago, Flagler County was ranked 22nd. I'm happy to report that in 2016, we moved up quite a few positions, and we are now ranked number 14. Number 14 out of 67 counties' health outcome, and you might want to ask, so what makes up this ranking? Well, it's made, it's based upon length of life, quality of life, and quite a few health factors and socioeconomic determinants of health, which I'll mention in just a moment. Please note that Putnam County, our neighbor to the west, is ranked 64th healthiest community and county in the state. St. John's to the north is number one, and Volusia's number 42. And I'll share a couple of slides as to why we think that is. Okay, mortality of life, again, that ranking based on length of life. For males and females in Flagler, we're right on average with the state of Florida. Please note, men, that women outlive us by six years. So ladies, we need to learn from you of what it is that you're doing. So, we're not quite as healthy as the females in the population. Quality of life, what's bracketed there in green means that we're better off than the state average. If it was red, it means that we're beyond the state average. Poor or fair health, that question is based on a survey, and basically, it is, you know, what percent of the population feels that they are of poor or fair health? And in Flagler, it's 14% of us. All right, health factors like behaviors and access to insurance, all these things make up and have deep connections to how healthy we are as a community. So let's just take health behaviors, just take a couple of them. 14% of our adult population smokes, compared to the state of average is 21%. The next stat is, can be sobering. 57% of us in Flagler County are considered to be obese and overweight, and the reason why that's significant is because we all know the connection between obesity and things like diabetes, heart disease, cancer, hypertension, so on and so forth, these chronic conditions that affect us later in life. Also, what makes up health outcomes is how many of us have insurance? Who has access to physicians? Who doesn't? 19% of us there in Flagler, we do not have insurance. And then infant mortality, the infant mortality rate is six point three deaths per one thousand live births in Flagler. That's pretty much where the state average is, at six point two, but the issue here is the disparity and the inequity of infant mortality when it comes to black, Hispanic, and white babies. So that is a major initiative of the Health Department statewide, is to reduce that gap and reduce that inequity. I mentioned that just moments ago, cancer is number-one cause of death in our community, followed by heart disease. These three slides, I'm not going to dwell on too much, but just want to point out one thing, whether it's educational attainment, health insurance coverage, or median household income, these are other factors that are strongly connected to how healthy we are. So let's use median household income as an example. You can see there to the right, the median household income in 2014, a flagger was forty-seven thousand dollars. Putnam is thirty-two thousand, one of the worst in the state. Remember, they're ranked sixty-fourth healthiest community. St. John's has the highest median income in the state of Florida. They are ranked number one when it comes to health care. So this is just to show, show that connection between these things and how healthy or not we are. The last thing I wanted to cover is just some examples of population health and your Department of Health in action. The Zika response was a big deal for us this past year, and will probably be an issue this coming year. In Florida, as of December thirty-first, we had one thousand, total one thousand nine hun- nine, one thousand ninety-nine travel-associated cases of Zika were reported, almost three hundred locally acquired, so most were from people traveling to a different country that got bit by the Aedes aegypti mosquito and became infected and brought the virus with them back to the United States. We had two travel-related cases in Flagler last year, a couple that did some missionary work in Haiti and came back with the Zika virus. As of April first, we've had, in 2017, twenty-seven total travel-related cases and two locally acquired. We are following fifteen pregnant women whose lab tests did show a positive for Zika. This is the issue, as you all have read about Zika, is it causes, can cause microcephaly in an unborn child, and that's a baby born with a smaller head, smaller brain than normal, and there are developmental issues and mental health issues that accompany microcephaly. So that's why it's such a big concern for the Department of Health and should be for everyone. The big message here is drain and cover, you know, to avoid getting bit by mosquitoes and vector-borne diseases like Zika, dengue, chicken gunna, West Nile. It's important, just drain and cover water, drain water out of fountains and bird baths, and just stay covered, and use insect repellent with DEET. That's how we can avoid getting any kind of vector-borne illness through a mosquito bite. Hurricane Matthew, the Health Department was really busy. We had a team of twenty-nine people and about ten volunteers, our MRC volunteers. We were in Rimfire Elementary for five days, twenty-four-seven, and we took care of three hundred-plus people from our community. These were individuals who were oxygen-dependent, medically needy, elderly, dementia patients, folks that needed assistance, and we had three hundred of them. Our staff did a marvelous job. We received many thank-you notes from folks in the community, plus we evacuated an entire nursing home. So we had five hundred people, special need folks, plus at Rimfire. Then we moved into Benell Elementary for two days, and then Church of the Rock. So we were really busy as first responders during Hurricane Matthew. Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan. Every three years, we collaborate with our hospitals in the community, Halifax Health, Florida Hospital Flagler, and the Health Department, and Flagler Cares, and we poured over looms of data about our health outcomes and to help us identify what the health priorities should be for Flagler County. Also, we also did a survey, an online survey and questionnaires, some people in the community, about six hundred people responded, and coincidentally, what we discovered as providers and as this group of forty to fifty who've worked on this for a whole year, the survey recipients came up with the same conclusions about what our health priorities are. And here they are, and this is what we're going to be working on with our community partners over the next three years. Adult behavioral health, mental health issues that affect our adults, and that includes substance abuse and alcohol abuse and just overall mental health issues. Number-two priority is youth behavioral health. I'm happy to report that Flagler Cares and Stuart Marchman did receive grant dollars to seventy-seven thousand dollars for the first year to identify where the gaps are and providing mental health services to our children. That will be followed by a three-year implementation grant. So we have different groups in the community working on different aspects of these five priorities. Cardiovascular disease and diabetes is the number-three concern. Health care for mothers and children under age five, this would encompass reducing that infant mortality gap that I spoke about earlier. And then, this was the strangest thing and disheartening as well, is the data for the amount of domestic violence in our community has skyrocketed. I mean, the graph is like this. From 2013 to 2015, we've had a doubling of the number of domestic violence cases in our community, most likely associated to problem number one and problem number two. So there's most likely a connection there. So these are the things we'll be working on. And then, future Department of Health priorities, we began a dental sealant program at our elementary schools, Benell Elementary. A sealant is, it's a plastic coating that goes on your molars, and it's for first, third, and fifth graders, and we've been doing this since October. Over two hundred children have received dental sealants to prevent tooth decay and cavities. The county is going to be doubling the size, paying for doubling the size of our dental program. We've grown twenty-four percent over the last year, so we're excited about that. Recently, we began HIV services. We have thirty HIV patients that we're taking care of right now by the Health Department. I mentioned our Healthiest Weight Initiative and Infant Mortality Initiative, the Community Health Improvement Plan interventions, community water fluoridation, and I'm working real hard on trying to obtain extra public health funding for our Department of Health, and I'm happy to report that we are making some progress. Like our school system, the Department of Health, when you look at our funding on a per capita basis, we're one of the worst funded in the state of Florida, and that is unacceptable, and I believe our school system has the same issue. So I am working with other health officers and executives in Tallahassee to try to change that, because our population has grown so much and funding formulas have not kept pace, but I'm confident that we will prevail to provide more public health dollars in the future for Flagler County. Well, thank you so much for your attention and this privilege and honor to give you an update.
Questions, council members? I just had a question as far as dental services. So you said that increased dramatically over the last few years, so is that, are those children on Medicaid or those children on Affordable Health Care Act? I mean, what determines the availability to have a child come into your office?
A child is usually on Medicaid, so of the six thousand visits that we had last year, ninety percent were children, and the clear majority of them were Medicaid. We do get some Healthy Start Volution Flagler dollars to help with some of the uninsured. Folks that are not on Medicaid, there's about twenty of those that we're able to treat.
Have we seen an increased population of Medicaid in our county?
Yes, we have. Over the years, we have seen an increase. It's about, I think, total adults and children's about thirty-three thousand people that are on Medicaid in Flagler County. It's a huge, it's a huge number.
And as far as, one slide was surprising to me, the graduation rate, it was, showed seventy-four percent red. I'm not understanding that percentage. I mean, I thought we had a very good graduation rate in Flagler County. Are you saying that we don't?
This is just statistics that I got from Florida Charts, through the Department of Health, and I would imagine that they got their figure through the Department of Education. I certainly can double-check that figure.
So what determines a graduation? Is it, is it GED, or is it actually walking and collecting your diploma? What is it?
Yeah, it's someone over the age of twenty-five who does or does not have a high school education.
It was just surprising.
Yeah. Because you brought that up, Mayor, I will certainly double-check that figure.
Yeah, I mean, it was just surprising to me, because we talk about it in Flagler County all the time.
Yep.
No, I think, based on how Mr. Snyder said they measure that statistic, I suspect our actual graduation rate from FPC in Metansus is probably higher than that percentage. I'm sure it reflects a lot of adults, immunity that may have attended school elsewhere, but...
And didn't complete their high school education, that's probably it.
Yeah, because most of the kids...
Councilman, thank you.
...away at college.
Well, I was going to say, yeah, that may even be skewed by the, yeah.
For your time and presentation, all you do in our community.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to come back more often as time goes on, because seventy-seven percent of the people that we treat come from Palm Coast, so I think the relationship between the Health Department and the city, I'm looking forward to it getting stronger.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now move to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is an ordinance, so...
Of course, Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance to the City Council, the City of Palm Coast, Florida. It's amending Article Two, Regulation of Water and Sewer Utilities. That's part of Chapter Forty-nine, Utilities, and that's of the Palm Coast Code of Ordinances, and this ordinance establishes new sections forty-nine thirty-two through forty-nine forty-three, and sets forth uniform requirements for cross-connection control of the water distribution system and the reclaimed water system. Provides for severability, codification, conflicts, and an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, this is a second reading of this ordinance. This is a housekeeping item. It doesn't change how we operate, but it brings our Code of Ordinances up to date with some of the new rules and regulations at the state level, so it just matches state law.
Questions, council members? If not, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Seven, please do so at this time. I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Eight is another ordinance. I'll turn it over to Mr. Reichman.
Of course, Mayor. This is an ordinance to the City Council, the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Article Two, City of Palm Coast Animal Control Regulations, and Chapter Eight, Animals of the Palm Coast Code of Ordinances. This ordinance amends dangerous dog and dangerous animal regulations. It revises the dangerous dog classification procedures and amends dangerous dog and dangerous animal requirements. The ordinance prescribes penalties where dangerous dog attacks or bites without provocation, prescribes penalties where dog attacks and causes death of a human, revises confinement requirements for dangerous animals and attack dogs, provides for severability, codification, conflicts, and provides for an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, this is a second reading of this ordinance. This is a housekeeping item. It doesn't change how we operate, but it brings our Code of Ordinances up to date with some of the new rules and regulations at the state level, so it just matches state law.
Questions, council members? If not, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Seven, please do so at this time. I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is a resolution approving a contract with Shade Systems Incorporated for the design and construction of shade sales at four city parks. Mr. Landman.
Mayor, City Council, this is on our capital improvement program. You know, if you have ever had a child or grandchild in the summer around here, and they want to go to the playground, and the sun is beating down on the playground equipment, it's actually hot enough to burn them, so City Council a couple of years ago asked us to incorporate in our capital improvement plan a, something that's quite common in a lot of Florida, a lot of the southern states, and that is put shades over the playground equipment, but try to do it in an attractive manner, so they call them sales. So Carl's going to give you the details about this program we're ready to go with.
Yes. Good morning. I have a little presentation today to go through this particular project, is for the design and construction of shade sales. To begin the project, we generated some conceptual designs. We hired a consultant firm, brought them on board, visited the parks, did some analysis of the sun path, and proposed some arrangements of shade sales at four of our city parks. We identified particular playground equipment that should, preferred to have, you know, more shade than others, like slides, you know, a lot of skin contact elements. So this particular park here is Waterfront Park. You can see the blue and green elements are the proposed shade sales. Those won't be the actual colors of the shade sales, they're just here to depict the location. And these are just conceptual in nature. We'll be working with the selected bidder to fine-tune these designs. These are just our initial concept layouts. Our second park is Beltair Park. Again, you can see the shade sale covering areas. The brown is, that you see around the blue and green are the, the mulch areas of the playground, so it's still part of the playground, but the playground elements themselves have the shade covering on them. The third park is Ralph Carter Park, and the fourth park is Seminole Woods Park. And this was a different, I guess, bid process that we did here. Shade sale systems vary quite a bit between companies in terms of the structural design, the fabric used, so rather than be specific to a particular manufacturer, we created a, more of a performance spec. We worked with the design consultant, we prepared those conceptual designs and said, okay, this is the elements we want to cover in the playgrounds, these are our minimum performance criteria that we want to have in place for the fabric, the warranties, you know, those sorts of items in the bid, and we established a project budget, saying that these are the dollars we want to spend for all four parks. We submitted that, sent that out for bidding, we received four bidders. They proposed a lot of product data, you know, all the information we asked for. A city evaluation team went through those and scored all of the packages based on the criteria. Shade Systems was determined to be the top-rated proposer. Those won't be the actual colors of the shade sales, they're just here to depict the location. And these are just conceptual in nature. We'll be working with the selected bidder to fine tune these designs. These are just our initial concept layouts. Our second park is Beltar Park. Again, you can see the shade sale covering areas. The brown is, that you see around the blue and green are the, other, the mulch areas of the playground, so it's still part of the playground, but the playground elements themselves have the shade covering on them. The third park is Ralph Carter Park. And the fourth park is Seminole Woods Park. And this was a different, I guess, bid process that we did here. Shade sale systems vary quite a bit between companies in terms of the structural design, the fabric used. So rather than be specific to a particular manufacturer, we created a, more of a performance spec. We worked with the design consultant, we prepared those conceptual designs and said, okay, this is the elements we want to cover in the playgrounds. These are our minimum performance criteria that we want to have in place for the fabric, the warranties, you know, those sorts of items in the bid. And we established a project budget, saying that these are the dollars we want to spend for all four parks. We submitted that, sent that out for bidding, we received four bidders. They proposed a lot of product data, you know, all the information we asked for. A city evaluation team went through those and scored all of the packages based on the criteria. Shade Systems was determined to be the top rated proposer. And as part of the submission, we asked them to submit a proposed schedule. There are various elements through the process. It's obviously getting through the contract execution, then we do a preliminary design, work on some shade studies, fine tune that conceptual design, then we go into a final design. Once that's approved, then they manufacture the product, and then obviously installation, and then close out of the project. So based on that proposed timeframe, the project would be complete August through September timeframe. And council action before you is to approve the design and construction contract with Shade Systems Inc. Their bid amount was four hundred, just over $406,000, and a 10% contingency for unforeseen conditions at $40,000. We did have some discussions with the bidder. There is a item that we'll be working with them for a deductive change order to reduce the, some of the contract requirements. It's not going to reduce the material or workmanship of the product, it's more of the documentation of existing conditions and pre-construction elements that we're going to get, receive some, and $8,000 savings for the city that will process as a deduct to their contract.
Yeah, Carl, originally did we have, what did we have, a 5% contingency set on this?
It's a 10%.
But why did we budget 20?
That, that's what, this is coming from a fund, the Park Renovation Fund, and we have numerous projects in there, and that, that contingency we split between projects. In this particular project, we're not going, there's a lot, I guess it's going to be limited, unforeseen areas. The only place we're going underground, typically that's when you find those unforeseen, is when you dig underground. And we'll be digging footers. We have some flexibility to shift those around if we run into irrigation or other utilities that may be in the way. It's just what we had available from our other projects.
Were we based contingency on the money we have available?
Well, we had a line item of 20,000. You can see we budgeted 425 for the shades, we had 20,000 there, so we just used that 20,000 left over from the project budget.
He's just trying to show where the money is going, where the money's going to go, come from.
If you add the two together, it equals the.
Oh, I got it. I just was wondering why the 20. I mean, it's, looks, it's 5% of the original budget, and then we, we're looking for 10%. So it's okay. I'm not, it's the. And I'm just trying to figure out if there was a process in there for that move.
The, well, you know, we, we're just trying to show that after the $8,000 deduct, we're going to be low for 400,000. So we're trying to show that when you add it all up, there is enough money.
It's the same. Oh, yeah, no, I'm good. But what if, what if we were to come in at 425 and we needed a 4?
You know, you hopefully you don't ever have to use that contingency. In this case, we, I, I would be surprised if we ever need the 40 grand, but it's just a standard number we use.
Correct. Okay.
Any other council?
Yes, I do. So for transparency's sake, the process that happened last council meeting, I investigated the different proposals that we had received from the different bidders, and I approached it at the city workshop, even though that was a marathon of a meeting. I was a little bit taken back because $400,000 is a lot for a shade system. Now, after investigating the different proposals, I did find that Shade Systems clearly had the most elaborate and superior designs and summation of what they're going to provide for the city. But inside of their proposal, they had shown examples of what they had previously completed. And there were projects such as Point Park, which is down in Miami, that were similar to a single instance of what we're going to be installing at the four different parks. And that project had been completed at $79,000. So $79,000, to me, times four is less than what they were willing to approve, or what they came in at with their contract amount. I was fortunate enough, Carl and I, we contacted the Shade Systems, Inc., and the $8,000 that was attributed that they were able to move out was a digital rendering, a video rendering of what the installed system would look like. And that's something that we haven't traditionally done in the past. Now, further looking at the proposal, I think the $406,000 minus the $8,000 for the video is still an exuberant amount of money for what they're going to be providing, especially when you take into account the other bids that were much less expensive than this. I think it would be prudent for us to be able to come in somewhere around $380,000 or $375,000. So I would like to make a motion for a counter offer of moving this project forward at $375,000 in lieu of the fact that they provided examples of projects that they completed that are mimicking what we are designing here, and with the economies of scale, it seems more appropriate that that's a more reasonable figure.
I have no problem with a counter proposal. I don't know if we can do that, though. That's, I, I'm good with that. That's a good idea. I would love to be able to say, hey, you know what, we'll give you this. Yeah.
I don't know that that's necessarily possible in our bidding process. We, I think our options are to go back and negotiate additional change orders, which would be allowed under our bidding process, but that may change the, the nature of the product that we acquire. This particular applicant was determined to be the highest qualified, so going to a number two would necessarily require us to go out to bid again, possibly change the bidding requirements. But at this point in time, under, under the law that applies to our bidding process, I don't know how we would simply go back and make a counter offer short of going back and negotiating additional change orders, deduct change orders.
Let me, let me ask, because, so you said, per the discussion you had with this particular company, that they did it at a lower cost elsewhere. So have there been discussions on why they're attributing a higher cost?
Yes. Carl can, can address that, that there's, and that's the whole problem with all these. There's a lot of apples and oranges depending on, you know, as you, they start talking to them, the height of the equipment means higher poles and those type of things. But Carl.
Yeah, they cited three particular projects in their qualification package as similar type projects, you know, they had, gave us reference with some dollar figures. There was one in particular, South Point Park in Miami, that was very consistent with what we were proposing our conceptual design. So we asked them specifically, okay, it was completed about a year ago, I think it was March of 2016. So we asked them, okay, you know, give us some feedback on how does this really match up with our particular design? So he says it is very similar. So we asked, okay, what are the differences? Why would our cost be more than that particular project? And they came back to us and they said one of the major factors was the height. We have a lot of tall playground pieces with roofs on them, which creates taller posts, which require larger diameter, a bigger footing. So that drove our cost up higher, and their project was slightly less than square footage. So I ran some quick amounts calculations, you know, based on the square foot cost, and we're about, you know, if we accept that $8,000 deduct, we're roughly about a dollar per square foot more than that particular project. So it's, it's very similar, and from that bid being from a year ago with construction costs going up, to me, I think we're right in line with that particular project, cost-wise.
I'm sorry, Carl. One of the most pointed questions that we asked was directly, why was that project able to come in at $79,000 compared to what we have divided by four? And it was very telling because one of the answers he provided was that he had a competitor bidding in that project, and he needed to come in at a lower figure. So it means he's capable of providing a same type of project at the level of quality that we're expecting, at a, at a lower cost. So taking into account the magnitude of our project, economies of scale would tend to lead you in a direction where that dollar per square foot is actually still on the wrong side of the equation. So that's where my justification comes in for expecting a lower cost for the project.
Well, two things I would say. One is, the, one to me would be, the biggest factor would be the year. You know, going, I mean, I am feeling this myself, trying to get people to do work at my house, that a year ago, a fence was $1,500, now it's $2,500. And I went, wait a minute, it's the same fence, you know? So it's like, well, I can get it, therefore I'll charge it, you know, the market. But the other thing, too, is I don't, I'm, I'm okay with this, this thinking, this, you know, going, I just don't want to create a bad name for us for 20 or 30,000. I want to make sure it's in line with stuff we can do, and how do we, how do we generate that competition so that when, when people do come to bid? Because I would imagine the number of bidders in that project in Miami was a lot more than what we had in up here.
Sure.
I mean, that's just a guess. I don't have, no information on that.
Do you, do you have the figures for the other bid proposals, cost-wise?
I don't have them memorized. I think they range from like 356,000 or so up to the 406. There are two around 400,000 and two around 360,000, somewhere in that range.
This was a unique process because it's design and build, so we don't necessarily take the lowest bidder, which is an interesting thing to take into account because that really puts an emphasis on, and I have a question, how much emphasis do we put on the cost? Because I agree, by far, this was the absolute best proposal as far as actually being complete, having a shade analysis. It was, it was awesome, except I'm not okay with offsetting that with a large sum of money.
Is there any product difference?
Yeah, there, there was two different, there were different product specifications. Some of the other ones didn't give full, complete product information, so we can do 100% comparison, so some of them did lose some points, but this one was scored the highest because they did have the best product, with the best warranty, that it was, it was, obviously scored the best, at the top of the range.
Mayor, if I may, this was one of those that made our staff, maintenance people, quite nervous because, you know, it is very expensive, $400,000, but how long is it going to last and what is the maintenance issue's going to be? So this, you know, we did a request for proposal versus a bidding process where we take the low bid. If you're going to not accept this bid, and I will tell you that if you go back to them and say 375,000, there'll be two things. You'll either figure out a way to cut $25,000 out of his cost, which means you're going to impact the quality of the product, or, or somehow he's going to save his 25,000. But, so what I would suggest, if you don't want to go this route, that we just reject all these bids, and we go out to bid and have low bid be the factor. And, and that's fine, we can get a cheaper product. So if you want to have a cheaper product, then we need to go out and get low bid. But to have, actually have us go and negotiate at this point, value engineering, or as attorney said, you know, deduct something from it, maybe a sale or a park, yeah, we can get the price down. We can get the price down by just going out and going low bid.
But my big concern is, we, we have a harsh environment in Florida between wind, the sun alone, I know, just destroys things, and that's what this is going to be. It's going to be, you know, 24/7, well, not 24/7 in the sun, that'd be interesting, but it's going to be in the sun every day, you know, it's, it's blockade. And I don't want to go back, even if we save some money, I don't want to go back 60% shorter timeframe for it, because then ultimately at the end, it costs us the same. So I don't want to put it in twice, I don't want to repair it, I want, you know, so product is a big, a big factor in this. And I just want to make sure that that's, you know, what kind of life, term, what kind of lifespan do these, does this particular company's product have compared to the other ones? If there is any.
I don't remember the exact comparison between the two, but this particular one had a 10-year warranty on the fabric itself and a 20-year warranty on the structural components.
Okay. Compared to the other, compared to the other companies today?
I, I honestly do not remember. I think they were in the similar range, but I don't, I'd have to double check that.
So, you know, I, once again, I think the, really, the question is, is do you want to go with this process, or would you like us to go back out to?
Would we be able to reuse the engineering plans that Little John Engineering had already, had prepared for this project? We've already incurred the cost of having them design and create renditions of what we're expecting.
We would use that as specifications to go out and, and just get, go out to bid for, you know, basically, once again, the typical, give us your price, and then the low bid, as long as they meet those specs, would, would be awarded the contract.
Why was this project a design and build process instead of just a, a low bid opportunity for, for us? Because we, we've paid Little John Engineering to complete these, and is that accounted for in the actual budget of this project?
I think.
Not free.
Carl, Carl tried to explain that with, it's fairly unique, you know, there isn't, we aren't just putting one big square over it. You're, you're, and then each system has its own post and way it's connected and a variety of things. So it was just the recommendation of, yeah, our consultant, and then also the staff that did the research, that this was a better approach.
Now, these have to be removed, right? If they're, if we were in a hurricane situation or?
Right. And that was, that's one of the factors that was judged on, is how easy are they to take up and down? You know, the, because, yes, although they're, the wind rating is very high, but when you have a hurricane come through, you don't want to, you know, for this cost, you don't want to.
But I want to emphasize, I would, I haven't looked at the engineering specifications, obviously, but from a, from a liability standpoint, these have to be designed such that in unforeseen and unpreparable wind situations, these have to be designed and constructed in a fashion so that they're safe as, as well. Because certainly you can prepare for hurricanes, but there's certain natural events that you just can't prepare for, and so you've got to, to design these things accordingly. And I imagine that, that these are such that the amount of stress that they have to take, given the, the volume, the area of the, of the covers, could be extreme.
Well, I also think, so the $8,000 that we found the savings in, was that, that came out of the rendering costs?
What it is, is we, on all construction projects, want some kind of documentation as to what the site looked like before they got started. And so if there is damage, that we have evidence as to whether it occurred during construction or was it there prior to construction. Their interpretation of that was, is they had to hire a video team to come out and video the, all the park sites. We told them, no, a few, you know, just pictures would be fine, and they said, okay, well, if we don't have to hire somebody for $8,000, we'll take the deduct. Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, and we said, no, we don't need a complete video of the pre-construction, we just need the typical, take pictures. And that's where the savings came in.
Did you have a question?
No, my, my only thing is, I, I'm afraid if we put it back out to bid, and this, this company doesn't bid again, says they can't do it any lower, we're not even going to bid, then we don't have the quality we want with the other three bidders. But I, I get what you're saying, you know, totally.
Well, I like that. I like the idea that, you know, we, we should be more aggressive in trying to cut costs, but unfortunately, we're not. If we were a standard private organization, it'd be a lot easier, but publicly, it's a little different. However, that doesn't mean it can't be done. There's, we have to figure out how to do it. I think we're a little late on this one, is what, that's, you know what I'm saying? It's like, we could have done things pre-going out to bid, but it's hard to tell which ones are going to come back with that vast of a, a difference in price, you know, 350 to 400, you know, that's, that's $50,000. I know, though, this, let's go back to the project itself, is it, this project, I hate to put on any kind of hold right now because it is, you would upset my wife greatly, and we don't want to do that.
Is it possible, perhaps, we could bring up an image of the Point Park sale project that they completed in Miami to show the comparison between what we're expecting to have completed versus what they've actually built? I'm unsure how to use this computer system, I'm not good with the computers.
Well, this is just a monitor.
Hard to believe.
I, I don't know, we, you, you sent us a, or they, they sent us a photograph of that and an email, but I don't think, Carl, do you have that?
I can bring it up in one second. If you were to just Google Point Park sale installation, that would.
I have a question while we're waiting. The, I, I believe council member you indicated that the, you, you received information from the, the successful bidder in our situation, that they were able to give a lower price to the other jurisdiction because they were facing a competitor in that. were facing a, a competitor in that situation. Was that competitor in the Miami situation? Did that competitor bid here, if you know?
They, they did not. Uh, they actually gave us the name of the competitor that bid against them in South Point Park, and they did not bid for this installation. So that's the South Park, uh, South Point Park installation, which, uh, in accordance with the Little John Engineering rendition, uh, renderings, that's very similar to what we were expecting. I think it's even, uh, the same amount of, uh, sales. It's, it's pretty elaborate. It's beautiful. There's no doubt about it, and it's very functional. I mean, and the quality is absolutely there. The only differential is, is the cost in this equation. But I, I understand where you're coming from, Stephen. I completely concur that this might be a little bit too late, but perhaps this is an opportunity to discuss how we could have approached this a bit differently in the future.
Yeah, I, I think we just have to, um, be very careful, as, as Steve had indicated, because, um, it's interesting when you're putting RFPs out there and companies are bidding, the message does get out, um, to other businesses that, um, perhaps the city not acting in, in good faith during that time period of, of this was the bidding process, um, these were the, the standards that were put forth, this was the expectation, and this is what they came back with. I absolutely applaud the eight thousand dollar savings. I am curious, as we move forward, uh, in the future, maybe having a future discussion at a workshop of maybe just how the bid process works, um, I think would be very beneficial to this council.
We've actually done that before. I think we can go through that. The, um, uh, there are, because we've got to go through the public process, there are limitations, uh, you know, you, but you do have different ones, like, uh, requests for qualifications, you know, requests for proposals, you know, typical bidding, there's a variety of things, but, uh, and, and just design. You can do design-build, you can do a construction management company, you can do a general contractor. There's a variety of things that we have. We can, we can do that.
This case is a little bit unique because this is the first time we're actually installing this sort of equipment in our city. Um, and you do have to weigh and take into consideration the quality of the product itself. So I'm, I'm not in favor of going back and compromising the quality just to, to have the initial cost savings, because I believe the savings will be long-term, um, certainly by, by what they've put forth in their proposal. But, but, um, I, I'm in concurrence that maybe moving forward, we need to just have a true understanding of the different public policies, the state statutes, what that requires us to do. Um-
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, the process for which we actually created the budget for this process, did we go out to Little John Consulting first and get the renderings from them, and then they give us that back, and we say, we expect to pay X dollars to complete a project that would match the set of criteria? Or did we tell Little John, we want to spend four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars on a sale system, build us something that costs that?
No, we, we started, um, the price came second. We hired Little John, we identified what we wanted to cover, what our ultimate goal was, our long-term, our ease of use. They did research on multiple manufacturer products and came back to us, and we said, okay, this is what it's going to cost to cover those parks that you want to do to meet this criteria.
So they helped us put the budget together-
Correct.
-during that process, yep.
Let me, let me oversimplify a little bit, but I, I, I think it's interesting, to, to a certain degree, the, the process that local governments are, find themselves in in this, in this type of, um, purchase, purchasing situation is, is very dissimilar to what we experience in our day-to-day lives. For example, let's say we want to go out and we want to buy a vehicle. We take what kind of vehicle, the specifics of that, and we can go and we can go to four or five dealerships, or go online even, and, and have them bid against each other until we know that for that apple, that specific apple, we are getting the best price. Unfortunately, that is not the process that local governments can follow. We design the apple, then we put the apple out there, and we ask people to bid on what they can build and get, get us that apple. And, and once that happens, we can't get involved. We, we then wait a month or so for those bids on that apple to come back, and then we open them. It's a bid opening. And at that point in time, we have to decide if it's, if it's simply a low bid, then we can select that. This one was even more complicated because we were looking for, we were qualifying the candidates, not just, not just, uh, the apple, but the apple, the apple producer. And I know I'm being trite with, with this description, but it does really tie the local government's hands, the process. So, once we open those bids, we can't then go back like we would like to do as private citizens and say, okay, let's renegotiate with it, or, or have people bid against one another. As the mayor indicates, what you have to do at that point in time, if you don't like any of the responses, you got to go out for bid again.
Also, I mean, I'll give a, I'll give a truer example. Um, when I was lobbying, I would present, run right proposals to local governments throughout the state of Florida. You, you do your due diligence in, in advance of writing those proposals. You make sure you understand the population, you understand what their legislative issues are, how big of a carry that's going to be, um, if, if their priorities are, are, are large ones. So there's a lot of things that come into play in context when private industry is bidding on, um, public dollars. And, um, I can, I can definitely concur that once that process and that proposal was submitted by the deadline, we were not allowed to contact that entity whatsoever. Um, no contact with the elected officials, no contact, that was off limits. Um, when the scoring came in, and we, if we were shortlisted, that was great, or, or if we got the bid, that was great as well, but it is a very, very specific system that is prescribed by state statute, and by the way, is very serious if it's compromised. Um, these are, these are not, um, these are not things that we look upon, or the state looks upon lightly. So that, that's a good example. Um, and it is very technical. So in this case, you know, I, I go back to, um-
Joe.
Councilmember, no, Bill. I just, just to say, I mean, um, i- i- in this case, the conditions, the putting up, the get, setting up, uh, those things, I think, did come into play with this particular company. That was a little bit more comprehensive. But moving forward, I, I do think we need to take a look at, uh, our approach.
We can do that. I, I just would like to conclude that I actually think, uh, I, I applaud city staff for trying to do something a little unusual on this one. The easy process, and we wouldn't be having this conversation probably if we did that, is just go out and get, and get the low bid. In this case, I, they stepped out of that box and said, we think that because of the type of project this is, that we need to do something, uh, a little different, um, for long-term, uh, quality, uh, long-term, uh, stability of the project. Um, so, you know, but it is a judgment call. We don't have to. And city council wants us strictly to, just strictly go low bid, and, and we can have those conversations. But that's the feedback we need, is that, yep, we just want it to go with the low bid every time. It's interesting, then when the low bid doesn't work out, then we get the, why did you go with low bid? You should have worried more about quality, so it's-
Let me just say, and I'm sorry, because this is an important note. Low bid isn't always the best example, because Highland Park is a really good example of that.
Yep.
Um, we have gone through a tremendous amount of stress over the fact that the low bid came in, we went with the low bid, not familiar with a particular company, and it has caused a tremendous amount of angst within this community. So, uh, it's not always the best resolution.
And in lieu of our conversation here, uh, discussion with the council, and the fact that we are having a savings of eight thousand dollars, I, I would move to retract my motion for, uh, counter-offering of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm satisfied with the savings that we've encountered by eliminating the extraneous video renderings, and I think that this is an important thing, because using those parks in the summer underneath the Florida sun is not something that's ideal for kids, so-
Or grandparents.
Or grandparents. You're absolutely right.
This brings up, though, something, Nick brings up something that has been a passion of mine since I've been on this board, is getting involved, the council, getting involved with these types of processes before we're sitting here when the process is done. Uh, you know, one of the things I, I had proposed a couple of years ago was that, like, we assign council members to different external organizations, like TPO, TDC, so we should be internally assigned to departments, so we can work with those departments, not be in charge of anything, not even be, uh, just to be a fly-on-the-wall type of scenario, so that if, like, Nick sees this and he goes, yeah, I don't know that I like us doing this, for whatever reason, he can bring that to council before we're at this point. Because like I say, right now, I'm, I'm, my, my only problem here is I don't want to turn back. We've already invested too much in it, and the process can hurt us i- if we start, you know, second, you know, if we say, give us a bid, and then say, ah, never mind, we were just kidding. Now give us another bid, you know. So, I, you know, that's where, but these are the things, if, if a council member has an issue, we could bring up before it gets here, and we can discuss it, and, and then, but, uh, that's just food for thought in another scenario.
But I, I feel obligated to comment, though, is that-
No.
Our, our procurement, uh, policy, and as, as the mayor indicated, a lot of it has to a state law, is it specifically says, thou shall not contact or communicate with elected officials who will make the final decision, uh, during the, uh, selection process.
Right.
It's only after we ranked them and made the recommendation that, then if you have questions, so by our policies and by law, it's really difficult to get, but I will tell you, there's a good reason for it, because there's a community down south I read about that, uh, council members say, yep, for, you know, ten thousand dollars in my bank account, I'll be happy to recommend, and they're literally going through that right now.
I have to inject myself, though.
And, and so there's a reason for that, uh, policy out there, I'm just trying to say.
The process that would involve some type of overview from city council would occur between the steps of Little John Engineering providing renderings and our determination of what our proposed budget would be. I don't, I think if our policy, and I understand the volatility that that creates, if you have a, a firm that's able to contact a city council member, I, I understand the transparency, uh, being thwarted there, but the actual process would occur in that transition phase where we say, okay, we have the renderings of what we would like to install at these complexes. Now is the time when we're able to set the budget before we go out to bid, and that excludes any council members from having that type of, uh-
Bringing back-
In other words, we could work around that kind of stuff and still be involved.
Bringing back, uh, concept plans, similar to what we've done with, like, Old King's Road, and, and some of those, um, recently, where before we're actually out to bid, yes, we can do that. Uh, and, you know, we, we've done, we did that, like, with the community center. Some of the larger projects, we, we've done that. Uh, this one did not seem like it was large enough to come back with a concept plan for, for, for city council. Um, there we go. Uh, so all those are just judgment calls, and, and, you know, good, good discussion, good, good feedback. Uh, if we brought back every, you know, you've got, uh, drilling wells, uh-
Four hundred thousand dollar well?
That's why, that's why I don't want them brought back. I prefer a council member embedded in the process so that most of it doesn't come back. I mean, it shouldn't. I mean, most of it is just, you know, but if something is foreseen, then there are the opportunities there. But that's not, this is not for now, I guess.
Yeah, so let's, um, open up for public comment. Any member of the public wish to make comment on this agenda item? Please do so at this time.
Lewis.
Yes, Louis for Palm Coast.
I have several questions. One of them is the length of, of, um, how strong is the, the material, and do you have backups for that material? Also, can our people take down that equipment in a reasonable amount of time? Uh, we don't want a situation similar to a, I'm not saying a bounce, you know, the bouncy things that they have-
Bounce park.
And this thing blows up, and all of a sudden, we're going around chasing our you-know-what. So I just say, uh, uh, quality is, is most important, but at the same time, can our people on the ground here, uh, operate, you know, or, or, uh, repair, or whatever is necessary? Is it easy, easy enough for us to do? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good day. John Brady, Palm Coast. I'd like to read to you a letter that was published in today's News Journal. Today, the city of Palm Coast will be asked to vote on a contract to put shades that will cover playground areas in four city parks. The cost of this contract is almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is supposed to be a nice thing and make playgrounds more usable during the hot summer. Raising eight children in the northern climate, I knew that using playgrounds during the heat of the day was a bad idea. From the information presented at the workshop on April eleventh, there was nothing to indicate that these shades would extend the usable hours of the four playgrounds. I suggest that Palm Coast needs to stop looking for nice and focus on safety. Safety would include lights and sidewalks. The city council on March twenty-eighth had a presentation by students from Metansus High School, who offered some ideas relating to safety. The presentation was well-done and underscored the need for city council to get busy on safety issues. The time to get serious and heed the concerns of these students and all the residents of Palm Coast is now. We need streetlights, sidewalks, not shade, trees, or signs. It is time to find ways to quickly install streetlights at locations identified by the students. Say no to shades and yes to streetlights. Thank you.
Next speaker. I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council and entertain a motion.
Move approval?
I just, uh, sorry, forgot to answer one question. Um, yes, Louis, actually, there's a ten-year warranty on this, and, as indicated by our staff, part of the criteria set forth was, was our staff able to go in and take it down safely, uh, to protect our community? Yes, they are.
And may I also add to that? Uh, that was actually one of the most important things, is that the quick release system was something that was only on this proposal, so that Carl was spot-on by saying that this is the easiest one to take down.
So, motion, and is there a second?
I'm sorry, may I hold on? I just wanted to say to Mr. Brady, um, that the money that the shades is coming from is different from the money that the lights is coming from. So it would be a different budget item anyways, correct?
This won't impact our, uh, lighting or path project whatsoever.
It's motion, and is there a second?
Second.
All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, um, consent agenda. Any member from the public wish to speak on agenda items ten, eleven, twelve, or thirteen? Please do so at this time. None, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda? Please do so at this time.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Uh, the FDOT online website came out with their traffic count, uh, for twenty sixteen. Florida Park Drive increased four hundred cars per day, a hundred and four trucks per day. This is a residential neighborhood. Florida Park Drive now has eight thousand six hundred cars per day, six hundred forty-five trucks per day. And all this traffic is sixty feet from the homes, and there are children in some of these homes. So, what are we going to do about this? Uh, a Denver study shows children living near busy roads are six to eight times more likely to develop leukemia and other forms of cancer. Twenty fifteen, a study came out, says children who live within one hundred and fifty meters or approximately five hundred feet of heavy-used roads had a thirty percent higher incidence of leukemia. Okay, these are children that are going, are being harmed by traffic fumes, traffic noise, and traffic dust. The reports say that it's mainly because children, over a long period of time, accumulate the harm. And this harm- And this harm in, uh, long-term exposure problems for children, being exposed to traffic over long periods of time, is leukemia, lung development, diabetes, asthma, hyperactivity, autism, pneumonia, brain damage, hindering the learning, disrupt, disruptive sleep, weight gain, behavioral problems. That's a lot of things to expose children to. So, uh, and it, uh, we just went through, uh, you know, the help thing from the county, okay? And this, this exposure is to close proximity to traffic, to the homes. I just ask the city to really take a hard look at this. This traffic can continually increase within the residential neighborhood. We need some help. We need it now, and we're just asking the city council to please consider helping the residents of Florida Park Drive protect their health. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I just want to compliment the workers who are really doing something for Bel, Bel, uh...
Beltair. Beltair.
Beltair, south, that center section. It's looking good, and it's looking better and better, I'm telling you. I, I, I seen them out there working, and I'm saying, gee, it's hot out here. I don't think I can do it anymore, but, uh, I, I have, you know, people always want to throw stones, but here, I want to throw flowers and say, "Y'all are doing a hell of a good job," and that my hat's off to the workers. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Louis just gave me a thought on the same workers that were there on Beltair. What I noticed on a lot of the city, uh, public work trucks, the pickups, when they're parked off to the side of the road, you're supposed to move over a lane or slow down, if you can't do that. And I noticed the, when they're doing that, they have their strobe lights on, which are where the blinkers are. So, they are the strobe lights in the front of the truck, but it seems like some of them only have the regular four-way flashers on the back of the truck. Now, usually, when you're coming upon the trucks, you're coming them up where they're the rear of the truck, and I wondered if those lights can be replaced with strobes, making it easier for the driving public to see them for the safety of our workers. Thank you.
Next speaker. None, I'll close public comment. Thank you, Mr. Carr. We'll review this, and I know this has been a topic you're very interested in, and it's been discussed many times, so thank you for your comments. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. We always like to hear recognition of our staff that does work really hard for us each and every day. And the final statement, as far as the flashers on back of the trucks.
Yeah, we, we have actually started this program fairly recently, trying to increase the safety, so, uh, I've been assured the best practice is being implemented in our vehicles. We didn't used to have strobe lights at all, you know, just a few months ago, so, uh, I think it's being taken care of.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to agenda item number E, which is discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Cuff.
I don't have anything at this time.
Mayor Nobio?
Yes. So, I have one more item that I'd like to discuss, and it's something that we all received in our email, and it's about a delinquent ISP that Palm Coast has partnered with in the past, and how we should move forward. I wanted to try to gain a bit of consensus here on the initiatives and motivations, and how we're actually going to move on. I spoke with Jim yesterday, and also Mr. Quinn, about the ISP that's delinquent, and we had sent a final notification for remediating the situation. That was not the first final notice that we've sent, so I don't anticipate the situation being resolved organically. But one of the things that alarmed me a bit when I was speaking with Mr. Landon and Mr. Quinn was the proposition of the clients that are currently provided through our city fiber net would be given the opportunity to move to another internet service provider, such as Bright House or AT&amp;T, and I would like to build consensus that it's much more of a viable option, and in good faith for the city, to, A, either offer the services ourselves to replace the ISP in this situation, or that we show preference to a local ISP that is partnered with the city, such as Datacom. Now, it's interesting to note that the ISP that's delinquent, their client list is, is pretty long, and it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 clients, and we're expected to reap $50 per client, per, per month. So, somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,300 among, over 12 months, that's semi-substantial. And for us to have the mindset that we would just go ahead and give this back to a Bright House or an AT&amp;T, in my mind, is not right, and it actually shows the importance that we have the feasibility study done on our city fiber net, so that we don't give all of the clients up that we have currently on our city infrastructure, A, not only because it'll lower city revenues, but B, because if we don't have anyone on our city infrastructure, it becomes much less of a viable option for our potential build-out in the future.
My first question is always, why are they behind? Are, are, I mean, why are they not paying? Well, let me rephrase that. Is business good, and they're just not paying, or do they not have the funds?
Let me, uh, I, I think I need to give the, the background, and, and I'll make sure it, I'll, I'll get to the "I don't know" part of it, but, um, first of all, it's, this is one of those that we have been nicely preempted by either state or federal law. We cannot be a, a independent service provider.
Is that true, Mr. Reschman?
I do not have a definitive answer. I can't, I cannot contradict the city manager. If, if you would like for me to, to investigate, that I'd be more than happy, too.
I would, please.
Yep, and you can ask some other attorneys in your firm who's already provided that, so, you know, hopefully they give you the same answer, but...
Which is why we partner with those private ISPs that are essentially the go-between, between the city.
Right. We, we are strictly a wholesale provider. That's what's important. None of these customers are Palm Coast customers. We have one customer, and that's Flagler Schools, and that's because of, you can't have an interlocal agreement between government entities, but...
The Flagler County Sheriff's Office?
Another one, yes. Uh, you're right, sorry. Another minor one where we, but once in a, again, another government entity where we can provide direct service with them. So, all the customers are Palm Coast Internet customers, or we used to have other providers who are the retailers, if you will, and then they use our lines. That's what's difficult about this, is that we won't turn, okay, so then, they are supposed to pay us, I'd say $50 a, a customer, is what our wholesale price is, and then they can charge whatever they, they charge the end user, okay? And then, we don't receive any of the money from the end user. They don't, they don't send us the, the check or the monthly payment. They send it to Palm Coast Internet. So, uh, why this is very difficult is if we turn off Palm Coast Internet, we turn off all those customers, and many of them think, "Well, the city just turned me off, and I just paid my bill. I'm up to date." And, and so, uh, what we've done, though, is we've stepped it up and said, "Mr. Internet, Palm Coast Internet, you have to not only get further behind, but start making up," which he did. Last time we gave him that, he started making monthly payments plus $2,000 a month, and was starting to catch up, and is actually not as far behind as he was. And then the last couple of months, he quit again, and so then that's where we start the process again. And it's like anything else, you know, we have to give him notice. If he doesn't step up and, and correct it, then we will eventually notify all his customers and, and turn him off. So, that's how that process will work. Why he's not paying us, have...
So, he has 400 customers?
No.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty, what?
What was the $50 a customer?
That's what he, we, we charge at $50 per month, per hookup, so essentially, he's responsible of paying us the $50, and then he charges whatever the margin is that he works on, so...
What's the $2,000?
The $2,000 was the catch-up.
Oh, okay, I got it, all right.
No, it was, pay, pay us your monthly...
That's what I heard. I heard $50 a month, and then I heard $2,000, and I said, "Well, that's a lot of customers."
About $1,300 is what his monthly bill is to us, and we said, "Pay your monthly bill plus $2,000 catch-up to get caught up in, for what you was in the rears." So, uh, the concept here is, and we, we've talked about this, is that, you know, maybe we need to get out of this type of business altogether and change our business plan and only sell dark fiber, but what we can't do is, they're not our customers. So, when I, as I described to Mr. Clufus, is that if we send them notice that we're going to cut off, uh, Palm Coast Internet, Palm Coast, you know, we, we can't make that customer go with somebody else that would be a new, another ISP for the city. They can, they can go with whoever they want. If they decide they now want to get internet service from Bright House, they can do that. If they, uh, Palm Coast Internet can actually contract with Bright House or any other provider out there, and keep them as a customer, and use, uh, Bright House, she's, AT&amp;T, whoever, or he can go wireless. He's got a wireless system, so he can bypass us altogether.
Clients. I don't know who their clients are. Who are their clients?
Uh, small businesses throughout the community.
Imagine school systems?
We got, we got lists. We can send you the, the list of, of...
I'd imagine, imagine, huh, I would imagine, imagine. I am, imagine school systems, I would think, is a very large contract. I had gotten the list of clients from 2016, the Flagler County Sheriff's Office over in CityWalk, as long, as well as Q Note, and that really speaks to the availability of the internet access over there. The only provider over there is AT&amp;T, and for business class, internet's $400 a month, which is five megabyte download, one and a half upload, so there's no options there, and that's where this market has emerged. And it's important to note that we cannot force other clients to go with a provider, but they can't, they can't go to Bright House or AT&amp;T without additional infrastructure being installed to their facility if it doesn't exist today. What we can do is say, "Palm Coast Internet is not paying their bills to the city, and here are the other city ISPs that you will not have to install additional infrastructure to your facility for." I, I understand that there's a compromise between the city saying, "Hey, now just pay us directly, because we don't operate in that manner as of today," but I think it would be a foolish decision that we say we're okay with them just saying, "Go with anybody you want," instead of at least suggesting so that we...
Yeah, I have no, I have no issue providing them information on, you know, what, you know, what would be both cost-effective for them and good for the community to move to. I mean, there's, you know, that's...
If we send, if we send the notice out to his customers that we're about ready to cut him off, we will let them know the other ISP, or we have maybe a couple of options, one in particular, that they could contact. Once again, we can't say, "We're just going to have you go with this other customer because they're not..."
Somebody to look at.
I also think it's important, I mean, the city invested a tremendous amount of money into our fiber net, and, um, it's sad and unfortunate that it's come to this, the time with this particular ISP provider, but I, I think it would be very beneficial to send out to 25 clients, local businesses, to say, "We just wanted to keep you in the loop and make sure that we're keeping you informed. We're ending our, you know, our contractual relationship with this provider, but these are the list of other providers we would encourage you to contact." But just to say, Bright House, I mean, I think also, it helps with our small business community that they have access to our fiber nets, and it's been a benefit recently with Goya Sales, and, you know, we've seen that added value of that relationship and how it's grown, so I'd like to see us, in the future, make sure that we're continuing to work with our business community to, to keep the cost down for the small businesses that are in need of that service.
Yes, a couple, couple of points. The small business, $1,300 is, is not the main benefit to us financially. We have two huge benefits to us financially. One of them is the fact that we don't have to contract with any of these Bright Houses and AT&amp;Ts, and we're saving a, a great deal of money every year that has paid for the system. The other one is, is how much money we've saved the school district by, you know, because that one, we actually have to go out to bid, and we can show them that their costs have gone way down, but they could also contribute to, to our, uh, fiber net program. So, that's been a real winner for, for both sides there, which saves tax dollars for both schools and, and the city. The way the, uh, our game plan is to address this delinquency that our ISP, independent service provider, has, is going through the typical step, you know, that in this case, we stepped it up and had the demand letter come from our attorney that basically said, "Either you correct the situation, or we are going to take steps to, to cut you off." Before we do that, we will send out the letter to their, uh, his customers, informing them that we're about ready to turn, turn them off, so that they can make plans to do something else. In that, we'll let them know what other ISPs are available through fiber net, uh, so that's the next step. If the, if Palm Coast Internet, uh, once again starts making payments, starts doing their catch-up payments, then we're not going to send that letter out, because he has stepped up again. What we are doing now, though, is, is we're not waiting months before we send out the next demand. Once he, if he quits paying again, he's on a very short leash, and it doesn't take long before we're going to send out that next demand letter. And, and once again, we definitely agree that this is not, in, in particularly in today's world, it has, you know, if you think about it, it was 10 years ago we were started this fiber net, and that the technology world has changed substantially. We do need to upgrade, uh, our, our business plan and how we deal with the small businesses, and how we provide that, that benefit out there in, in the community, and take a hard look at, is, is there a better way of doing this than what we're doing? Trying to also make sure we stay within, uh, you know, the state and federal laws and, and a variety of things.
I think we're, we're in the, we're on the cusp of user investment, because we have the technology, we have the, you know, companies who would love to get involved in the technology. What we don't have are the end users yet, but we're right there. I mean, they're, you know, they're ready to take that step, so, you know, unfortunately, some companies are going to be sacrificed to the business gods, you know, and to bring this forward, but when it hits, it's going to be big. It's just going to be a, a complete movement over.
Well, and I, I can, just by looking at this list, it would, it would seem that these businesses are actually paying.
They're probably paying.
I mean, the...
Yeah, that's what you would think, is they're not getting paid, and they're not paying, but...
Yeah, I mean, the list, the sheriff's department, imagine schools...
I'm guessing the sheriff's department sends him a check every month.
Yeah, they're good for it.
It, it seems like there's a, a very strong clientele list that would be responsible for, for paying. I mean, the Palm Coast Observer, I'm sure that they're paying their bill, but, so that's a little bit disconcerting, because that just, to me, just shows bad faith from a, a partner, collaborative partner that we've done business with, and, and that doesn't fare well.
Nope. We're, once again, we're the, we're the wholesaler, so we, we sell you a, a product as wholesale, you then sell it to the end user, they pay for it, and then you don't pay the wholesaler bills. That's exactly what, what's happening here, and very frustrating when he's collecting the money and then not forwarding it on. Yes, and that's why we've taken these steps, and that's why I informed you that we're taking these steps, but we also need to be careful that all those end users, that we don't just turn them off one day, and they want to know, "How come their whole system is shut down?"
What kind of timeframe are we going to give them, notice-wise?
We were talking about 30 days.
Okay.
For, in other words, if he doesn't pay this month, uh, well, actually, he already wrote a check as soon as he got this, or right before he got this, so he is, and that's usually what happens, is that he starts paying again as soon as we get serious, so we will continue to stay...
What are your staff time through this? I mean, that's, that's crazy.
Yep.
Blamorous, for sure. Blammers for sure. And I'd like to touch.
This is why the whole system is not good, and this is why we need to change it.
Which is the whole reasoning behind the feasibility study, and Mr. Landon touched on a very important point about renting dark fiber, which the volatility between the price that's offered for an ISP to rent the dark fiber from us can vary from a dollar per mile to $1,000 per mile. And I'm not qualified to make the decision on what our range should be. We need to defer to professionals there, and I, I would really like to see some emphasis put on trying to get a feasibility report done, so that we actually know where we stand right now. I think we all agree that this system currently is not working, but it doesn't mean that we should eliminate a private partnership with these ISPs, or move towards like something that Ocala has, where they do sell directly to the end clients. I know that the, you've told me before, and I haven't actually verified, but I'd like, Mr. Reschman, too, that the fact that Ocala's grandfathered in to be able to sell fiber directly to customers, which I don't believe to be true, because on October 11th, 2010, is when they decided through their feasibility report to move forward with a build-out to obtain private partners, or private clients directly, residents and businesses, and they sign up $30,000 a month of recurring revenue every month. So, I mean, this is an opportunity, again, it's easier for them, because they have their own electric utility, so they can run fiber on poles versus us where we have to go through conduit, but it's just a real big opportunity, and it's creating an opportunity for the digital economy to thrive. We, we play a very limited role in job creation, and one of the ways that we can try to adapt our community for tomorrow is through our high-speed internet access. And the 5% increase in a home that has access to 1 gigabyte per second internet access at $250,000 is a 5% increase. It's the same thing as having a fireplace installed in your house, having that access to the internet because of telecommuting becoming such a, a source of employment.
But what about third-party, like, we, we hear of right now, AT&amp;T is heavily involved in laying FiberNet. What I don't want to do is, because, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to get into business and compete with businesses. That's just a thing I don't believe a government entity should do, unless it's like, let's say, nobody will come here. Well, then we have to do something, because, you know, but it, you know, I just get worried that by the time we get through this feasibility, and we make, change our business plan, how far along is AT&amp;T going to be? And then say, well, you know what, you know, and I know that's going to change. Right now, I hear, I get, I, and I don't know why they send me emails, but I hear a lot about how Spectrum is upsetting a lot of people, you know? And I, and I go, I tell them, I say, absolutely nothing I can do about it, but, and, and the problem is, I don't even know what to tell them. The competition just doesn't, doesn't exist.
The lack of competition's the problem.
And that is, that is a, a problem. So I don't mind getting involved in pushing competition, you know, but I don't know if I want to be the competition, but.
Agreed. And to your point.
Something to look at.
To your point, if we wanted to be in a partnership with the AT&amp;Ts and the Verizons, with the dark fiber leases, I just don't want to be taken advantage of by a telecom where they come in, because that happens frequently.
They give us a nickel, and they charge $5.
Exactly. So I think that's a, I, I understand your, the fundamental.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Let me take the opportunity to give you a little update, because we've been working on these, these issues for quite some time. One of them is, in the previous city council, their highest priority was cell service, and trying to improve cell service. And that presentation is coming to you a week from today, where that's really been our focus, is once again, because we aren't, don't have the expertise or the connections with the providers of, of cell service, but we have towers. And it's frustrating when we know we've got a tower up close to a neighborhood that has bad service by a carrier, but yet why aren't they, why won't they come to that, that tower? So we have a contract with a company that basically will go out and determine where the problem spots are, where their dead spots are, and then, for each carrier, and then go out and approach them and say, how can we make those changes? And they don't charge us for any of that, except for anything they bring to us, they get a piece of that action.
I know we'll talk about this when this comes before us, but I also think we need to understand what the county's doing as far as their, their services, because I, I would hate for us to go into this process and, you know, a mile down the street, the county is focusing on putting up a tower and, and getting providers put on that tower, and it was, it just, to me, seems this needs to be more comprehensive.
Exactly, and that's what the plan will be. It, it's not just going out and doing it, but the first thing they do is basically they're going to do a master plan for the whole community, and where the towers need to be, and where the sites are, and current sites with current towers, not just ours, but whether it's on county property, private property, et cetera, and then try to start filling in the gaps. So.
That's, that's just a critical issue. There, there's, it's very frustrating not to have cellphone service within our community in 2017, so.
So our focus, and, you know, we put together this team to deal with both the FiberNet and the cells, the cell service, our focus and priority that we've heard loud and clear was trying to get this cell service process going. And then go with a consultant to help us with how the FiberNet works better, can work better. The other, other thing that's happening right now is, we have other providers in that we're working with that want to lay new fiber in town. And there's no reason to lay fiber on top of our fiber, and we're talking with them about leasing fiber from us, and, but they go places where we're not, and then we'll can do some trading and everything. So you're going to see that coming your way, too. So there are a lot of things happening in this arena, but it's been a very strategic layout of plans and, and just the resources we have. But you're going to start seeing some things coming your way fairly soon with making some of these improvements. In the meantime, we have, I know AT&amp;T is already getting fiber to homes and, and neighborhoods, so there are improvements going on. The big push right now is everybody's trying to get geared up for 5G, which is supposed to be, you know, the next greatest thing on cellphone.
Here's down the road.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what they keep talking about, is what they need for 5G. As soon as that's done, there'll be 10G or something, you know, it's.
Well, to Councilmember Clufus, just to close, so, I mean, is there an objection for the approach of just putting out the letter if they're not paying?
Of suggesting the information to them of, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're.
Absolutely, but only if they don't get caught up or pay.
If the letter has to go.
I would just strongly suggest to this individual that we're not going to continue to waste legal time for their non-payment of, of the bills when they know, I mean, it, it's just very frustrating to see that.
Message has been sent loud and clear again yesterday.
Thank you. Nothing? And I have nothing. So discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
You'll report, Mayor.
Thank you. Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Just a couple of announcements. First of all, Food Truck Tuesday is tonight, right out here on the edge of Central Park. Starts at 5 o'clock, I believe it goes till 8. Come early. Starts, starts at 5, very, very popular. The other is our little celebration of the B2 weir. It's hard to do a ribbon-cutting for a weir. This is a, a little unusual for us, but what, what this is, is, I call it a celebration, our staff is trying to call it a celebration, because it's a great partnership between us and the St. John's River Water Management District. The executive director's going to be here. They contributed a majority of the money for this, this new weir, because they know how it benefits the overall water system, both water quality and, and quantity. And, and so they are going to come here and do a little celebration. Our staff will do a little demonstration as to how a weir works. Most people haven't got a clue. It is in a neighborhood, because that's, you know, weirs, we don't have parking lot for weirs. Most people don't go visiting them unless they're going fishing, so I would encourage everybody to carpool. It is at 107 Barrington Drive, 107 Barrington Drive, and it literally is just behind people's houses, as most of our weirs are. So please try to carpool, and hopefully we see you out there at 1 o'clock today, here in a couple hours. So, Mayor, that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.